...members' knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion convening in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, Mr. Castillo, Ms. Hyland, Mr. I'm sorry, Ms. Carney, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Raznick, Mr. Sharp, Ms. Wadiska. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chaney. Sorry, sorry. Sorry.
And we're now she's remembered. All right, the next item is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda this evening as presented?
A motion.
Thank you, and do we have a second for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Raznick. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. The next thing is the public comment period. I have one slip with me this evening, which is from the Reverend Kathy Tibbetts and Sue Thackeray.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Tibbetts, I'm vicar of the Falls Church Episcopal and Sue Thackeray. We're here with a happy invitation to the school board and to the community to celebrate the 100th birthday of Jessie Thackeray. Jessie's well-known in our community. She, in 1948, she and her husband Franklin were among those who actively campaigned for Falls Church to become an independent city, making her one of our city's few surviving founders, and her husband Franklin was chair of the charter committee. She served on the school board and at the time of integration in the 1960s was very proud that the city of Falls Church was the first city school system in the state of Virginia to integrate its schools even before it was required by law. And she credits her friends and the support of the NAACP, especially Edwin and Mary Ellen Henderson, for helping to ensure that Falls Church had a much smoother transition than other communities across the country. On June the 16th, which is Father's Day, we will have a worship service dedicated to the celebration of her life at 10 o'clock in the historic church, and the community is invited, and we would especially invite her friends and colleagues from the school board to join us. And then immediately following the worship service, there will be an old-fashioned potluck dinner on the grounds in the fellowship hall, and there will be an opportunity for friends and colleagues to make comments celebrating her contributions to the community. We would hope that you would be able to enjoy, invite, we would love to invite you to come and join us that day. Thank you very much.
And then also, that's not to be confused with the party on the 23rd at Mary Ellen Henderson, at 3 o'clock, 3:00 to 5:30, I believe. So, if you can come to either one of those, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
If I might mention just a word, there's a wonderful review that board members at least have received of the greeting letter that has been brought to us this evening, but also a review of Jessie's volunteerism record in the community, and this is a really wonderful review. I would point out that there is perhaps inadvertent omission here, Jessie hosted several international students, exchange-type students, and I don't see that item listed, but that was over probably three decades that she did that, she and her family. But everything else here is also just, some of it just blows you away, the record of her service on the public schools newsletter, 19, from the 1960s until 1991.
Wow.
Well, those are just some examples, and just an outstanding.
... she continues to be very active, engage in the schools and telling children stories of her life and the importance of public education even today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. What an asset to our community she has been, for sure. Ms. Goodell, are there, I understand we have a letter to the school board, are there any other communications?
No, we just had the one letter. Do you want me to? It was from Mrs. Kuchma, and it was, she was voicing her concerns about the delivery of special education services.
All right, thank you, and that'll go in the record, for sure. All right, next, we're gonna have some fun. We have some recognitions this evening that we're going to do. The first is to recognize Delegate Jim Scott. Jim, come on, come on up, we're gonna probably say some nice things about you, so be front and center. You may not know this, but Jim has been the delegate for the city of Falls Church since 1992 down in Richmond, and if my math is right, that's 21 years that he has served our community. If I also remember correctly, Mr. Scott started his career as a teacher at our very own George Mason High School, and has been a great supporter of education, I'm sure reflecting on his role as a teacher, but also listening to his lovely bride, who I believe is also in education. What I wanted to do tonight, Jim, was give the people on the board who'd like to a chance to say some things to you, and then we have a small presentation for you. So, is there anyone here who'd like to make a few comments on the right end?
How many hours do we have?
I know, I'm calling on you first, because I knew you'd have some great things to say, but if you could just keep it to a few, that would be...
Well, to try to sum up, as you put it, 21 years in the General Assembly, before that, Board of Supervisors in a neighboring section of Fairfax County, and just oodles of other service, including one of the founding members of the board, the Partnership for Youth, and still very active in that organization as well. How do you say thanks? It's just, takes, it could take hours, it could take days. But, Jim, thank you so very much for all your outstanding service. I know, as a legislator, you know, we, seven of us up here are also sort of legislators, and we work together for the best. I know you've been somewhat outnumbered in more recent days, and you felt working together was maybe extraordinarily difficult at times. But I'll also say, I think you enjoyed some extraordinary success, even in these latter years. I think your constant emphasis on finding a way to provide for a transportation expenditures, the funding of those, which would not unreasonably impede on other kinds of expenditures for human services and for education. I think while your specific point of how to do that may not have won the day this year, there was some success, I think, on that score. And it, the outstanding part of it for me was that it split both parties, and forced both parties to find common ground and to get it. I think that's something that you, that kind of civility, that kind of compromise, has been something that you've been a champion of all the days of your General Assembly service. And so I think if perhaps you don't see it as a specific victory, some on the outside, I would say, I think do so, and I think we should be grateful to you for persisting in that very civil and democratic, small D, role for all those years. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Are there any comments people would like to make?
I would say thank you, and I don't, well, first place, if you get the marching feeling on Memorial Day, please feel free to join us. One of the highlights. Now, I don't remember, I was, my last day as chair of the board in 2008, you were with us for a very special ceremony with Mr. Rose, honoring Mr. Rose, a teacher, when you got a proclamation passed by the Virginia House of Delegates honoring his service after he passed away. And I'll never forget that, I really appreciate things like that, those little gestures, really meant a lot to the community, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, I wanted to take a moment to thank Delegate Scott and Ollie for his service here, but it was 18 years ago this November that I ran as the Democratic nominee for the 66th House District. You were in your fourth year in leadership in the caucus, and you were very helpful to me in that run, although I apologize, I wasn't able to side-rail Majority Leader Cox's career at that time, because he did crush me in that election. I do appreciate your support and help those many years ago, and you've been a friend of the city ever since, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
That's great, I didn't realize that.
I just want to agree and echo the comments of my fellow board members, and thank you for your service and your great support for our schools and all of education in Virginia.
Yeah, so I'm gonna bring down, we have a small memento from us for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You must be on a tour doing this. Thank you so much, we're gonna miss you, I wish you all best, and if you'd like to move your hands, please do.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the school board. I am particularly honored that you all would offer me an opportunity to talk a little bit about my experience in the legislature, but more importantly, my thrill in being a member of the delegation from Falls Church. I've lived in northern Virginia for a long time, as you've heard, I was, my first job was as a teacher. When I came back from the college years, I was a English teacher at Edison High School. Interestingly enough, I was a teacher at Edison High School on the day that John Kennedy was shot, and I will never forget that, one of the incredible experiences of all of our lives, something we all look back to and think, because there's something we could have done. But I have had a chance to work with some of you individually and some of you collectively, and I know what a great job you do for the city. My wife is, will be retiring as a public school teacher, teaches at Pine Spring, which is just outside the city, and we're looking forward to some travel and some opportunities to meet new people, but we'll never forget the city of Falls Church, and I will be visiting often. You may know that, as a native Virginian, I also claim to be one of the few who makes the second weekend in August, the Fiddler's Convention in Galax, Virginia, something we can't miss. And I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with Mr. Sharp as a member of the Fairfax Partnership for Youth, and most all of you in some fashion or other. I appreciate Dr. Jones's leadership in the school board, in the school system, and really the shining example of government at its best is what the Falls Church school system has done, and what you all have done to make it possible for, sometimes controversial, but you've held your guns, so to speak, and I'm very pleased that the result has been this year, is a decision on the budget which was much better than I thought was gonna happen, and I suspect some of you were not as optimistic. But, coming from a family of teachers, I want to point out that, interestingly enough, my grandfather was a chairman of the school board when they began schools in the Galax part of the world. Galax, as some of you know, is a long ways from here, but it's a place where I call, actually, my real home is the Fiddler's Convention Weekend in Galax. But, as somebody who has watched this school system operate, and particularly with regard to some of the groundbreaking work you've done in place in things like the International Baccalaureate, and your continuing work to make sure that the council and the citizens understand the importance of public education, and particularly, public education down in the early grades. I wish you very best of luck, and I hope you will feel free to call me if you think there's something I can do to be helpful to you and the city, because there is really not a more beautiful, more enterprising, more exciting place to live and work, I think, than the city of Falls Church. So, thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to be a delegate of the city of Falls Church, and for the kind words and wishes you all have given me, and my wife and Nancy. Thank you once again.
Thank you. That's a hard act to follow. Gosh, I feel like I want to get in your trunk and go to Galax with you, that fiddling convention. Next, we're going to recognize the members of the Business Honor Roll for this year. I think, Mary Beth Connolly, are you gonna come up and help with that?
Good evening, I'm Mary Beth Connolly, I'm the Community Outreach Coordinator for Falls Church City Schools, and tonight I am pleased to recognize 23 businesses and nonprofit organizations who are being recognized for partnering with our schools. They have all been named to the Virginia School Board's Association 2013 Business Honor Roll. In Falls Church, they are called Business and Education, or BIE Partners. Each of these organizations and businesses contributes to the schools according to their own expertise and ability. We go to great lengths to match a company or organization's specialty with the needs of our teachers and schools and school-affiliated organizations. Some of them sponsor school programs like Native American Day and First Robotics, some act as classroom mentors and career fair presenters, or donate toys or services to families in need, some contribute to environmental programs, or serve as judges in student cooking competitions, and the list just goes on and on and on. So I'll stop there, but I'm gonna say that we're so grateful that Falls Church businesses and community organizations are always willing to help the schools, and we are so lucky in Falls Church to have such a supportive business community. I'm gonna read the entire list of 23 honorees, and then we, a lot of them are here tonight, and then I'm gonna call out each of their names, and they'll come up and get a certificate from Susan. Okay. So, our 23 nominees, honorees are Alarm.com, Art and Frame of Falls Church, Cherry Hill Farmhouse, Claire and Don's Beach Shack, Creative Cauldron, DKG Design, Exxon Mobile Corporation, Falls Church Arts, Falls Church Foot and Ankle Center, Falls Church News Press, Family Medicine and Falls Church, Flippin Pizza, Fox's Music, the Greater Falls Church Chamber of Commerce, Idlewood Grill, Ireland's Four Provinces, Doctors Love and Miller Dentists, Mary Riley Styles Public Library, Tori McKinney Keller Williams Realty, Orange Twist, Point of View Eyewear, Tanner Hill Heritage Foundation, and the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. So now, I'm gonna ask Steve Trundle from Alarm.com, and Laura Hole from Creative Cauldron. Can you stay up here, and we'll take a picture? So, actually, go stand in front of the table. Yeah, so go up there, yes. All right, Laura Hole. Ashley Smith from Exxon Mobile Corporation. Kathy Vischow from Falls Church Arts. Nicholas Benton from the Falls Church News Press. Gordon Feas from Family Medicine and Falls Church. Amy and Christopher Chen from Flippin Pizza. Kevin Landis from Fox's Music. Hedy Ben Abdallah and David Lowe from the Idlewood Grill. Jennifer Carroll from Mary Riley Styles Public Library. Yep, you got it. Bill Mueller from Point of View Eyewear. And Michael Connolly from the Village Preservation and Improvement Society. And Tom Gittens, and Tom Gittens from Art and Frame of Falls Church. Did I forget anyone else? Yes. Okay. I got you all. One, two, and I'll just take another to be sure, please, one, two, three. Sure. And as this group is sitting down, I just want to say that these are the people that every time anybody in the schools needs something, we can always rely on them to come through, and they are definitely the go-to people in Falls Church when we need support for any event, they're the ones that help us out. So, thank you all so much.
All right, we have one more recognition before I move on to the consent agenda, and that is for the deputy clerk to the school board, Marty Goodell. Marty puts in endless hours supporting the school board, supporting the staff, supporting our kids, and supporting the community, for which she gets little recognition. So we thought we would fix that little problem tonight. Marty, we appreciate all that you do for us, I appreciate all you've done for me since I've been chairman, every time I show up at the office, she's there, and she's got stuff prepared, and she's ready to go, and she's prompt, and so I want to present you with this certificate, and then I'm gonna ask my colleagues if they have some words to share with you.
I guess the most accurate and best thing I can say is, whenever anybody needs something, needs help, at pretty much any time, you're always there, and you've always got the information, and I rarely encounter that. So, being the newest one here, certainly the one who's served the least, I really can't thank you enough, because I know I can always count on you to be there and help me, which you've had to do repeatedly, as often as yesterday, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else have some comments they'd like to make in recognition of our renowned deputy clerk?
Joan wasn't able to be here tonight, but I'm sure she would offer her thanks, but I couldn't pass it up. Thank you, Marty.
So I know it's always a trite thing to say when you say, "I wouldn't be here without you," but in your case, it's quite literal, "I wouldn't be here without you," because I think without your constant help with my calendaring nightmares, I probably wouldn't literally be here. Thank you for everything you do for us, Marty.
Thank you all, it's my pleasure.
If I could just add, I have always appreciated your patience and grace, you are lovely with all the reminders for when we need to get back to you about something that we sometimes forget about, so thank you so much for that, and for all the hard work that you put in for us, we really appreciate it.
All right, anyone down this end? Mr. Castillo?
Well, she's not going anywhere or anything, right?
No, no, this isn't a funeral or a wedding.
Okay, so we come to praise her, not to bury her.
That's right.
Well, I would just echo your persistent, kind way of getting me to do things that I forgot to do, the very gentle admonitions, and ready, readiness to assist in whatever thing, great or small, so I hope we can give you plans and certificates and gifts for years to come, so.
All right. Kira, has it all been said, or do you have something you'd like to add?
Well, I'll just point out that I may be the most frequent person traveling to conferences and other things that the board members are doing from time to time, and Marty's always there with a helping hand, and the flower received this evening, I think, is very, very fitting, it's, you know, rather than cut flowers, which go away after a while, those are likely to be here a long time, always, always blooming, and that just seems to be very fitting for Marty's character, thank you.
Thank you all.
Very good, thanks, now you have to come back for another year.
Oh, I'm happy.
Many more. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Okay, so let's get rolling, this is a long one.
We have a lot, yes. Okay, for personnel under staff appointments, that the school board approved the following appointments for the 2013-2014 school year, Alexandra Ware, Special Education Teacher George Mason, Matthew Hills, Assistant Principal George Mason, Sarah Dudley, Math Teacher George Mason, Kenneth Deal, Finance and Economics Teacher George Mason, Erlynne Kirsch, Social Studies Teacher, 8th Grade World Studies MEH, Kira Hiron, Band Teacher MEH, Brian Liskowski, 8th Grade Math Teacher MEH, Mary Brown, Language Arts Teacher MEH, Maryam Perone, Speech Pathologist TJ, Jennifer Reed, Kindergarten Teacher Mount Daniel, and Megan Hershey, Special Education Preschool Teacher Mount Daniel. For staff reappointments, that the school board approved the reappointment of Falls Church City Public Schools Administrative and Instructional Personnel and Support Staff for the 2013-2014 school year. Under resignations, that the school board accept the following resignations, Emily Thiel, Special Education Paraprofessional George Mason, effective June 17, 2013, Catrice Erica Simmons, Mathematics, George Mason, effective at the end of the 2012-2013 school year, Jana Herman, Part-Time Mathematics Teacher George Mason, effective at the end of the 2012-2013 school year, and Ashley DiCesso, Part-Time Spanish Teacher TJ, effective at the end of the 2012-2013 school year. For long-term medical leave, that the school board approved long-term medical leave for a George Mason employee, effective April 18, 2013 until June 30, 2013. Under EPED assignments, that the school board approved the following extra pay for extra duty assignments, three athletic EPED assignments, George Mason, for the 2013 spring season. Under advisory committee appointments and reappointments, for appointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee appointments, Bronwyn Rankin, Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016, Caroline Rydel, Extended Daycare Advisory Board for a term ending June 30, 2015, Susan Dymock, Family Life Education Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2015, and James Weatherly, Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Reappointments we have, that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments. Susan Dymock, family life education advisory committee for a term ending June 30, 2015. And James Weatherly, gifted and talented advisory committee for a term ending June 30, 2016. For reappointments that the school board approved the following advisory committee reappointments, extended daycare advisory board, Robin Jebson for a term ending June 30, 2015. The ESOL advisory committee, Ted Pierce and Ivy Smith for terms ending June 30, 2015. And the BIE partnership council, Gary Laporta, Tom Clinton, Tori McKinney, and Jeffrey Garafalo for terms ending June 30, 2015. Now, we get to the fund. Okay. Adoption of the 2013-2014 operating fund budget. That the school board adopted 2013-2014 school operating fund budget in the amount of $40,937,800, which requires a city appropriation of $33,682,700. The adoption of the 2013-2014 food service budget. That the school board adopt the 2013-2014 school food services budget with receipts and disbursements in the amount of $916,900. The adoption of the 2013-2014 community service budget. That the school board adopt the 2013-2014 community services fund budget in the amount of $1,839,300, which requires a total city appropriation of $92,900. Adoption of the 2013-2014 salary schedules. That the school board adopt salary schedules for the 2013-2014 school year as follows that are on board docs. Teacher salary schedules, support staff schedules, administrative salary schedule, and EPD schedules, which include extracurricular activities, athletics, and instructional leadership. Adoption of the 2013-2014 group hospitalization and group life insurance benefits. That the school board approve the benefits of group hospitalization and group life insurance for full-time eligible employees, part-time eligible employees, and retirees for the 2013-2014 school year as shown on the attached table on board docs. Approval of the 2013-2014 special education plan. That the school board approve the 2013-2014 special education plan as presented.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Goodell. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hiron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Call in favor, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed or abstentions? All right. Thank you very much. We have adopted a lengthy consent agenda this evening. All right. Next is business action information. First is item 8.01, which is a legislative update.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. And I'm happy to see Mr. Cheney back on the board and Dr. Jones. Happy to be here tonight to review with you the 2013 session of the Virginia General Assembly. From reading the newspaper and reading the information that I sent, you know it was a very controversial and very difficult year. This was the year of the teacher, as far as the governor was concerned. So, I'd like to start out talking about some of the governor's initiatives, what happened with them, where they went, go through what you had as part of your legislative package, and then talk about some of the other things, some of the mandates that you are going to have to live up to. First, with the governor's education package. The least controversial, and this was an amazement to everyone, was the teacher evaluation procedures. And the reason that this happened was because of your state organization, VSBA, working very closely with the VEA and the governor's office. And all of them were able to do some of the things that don't usually happen either in Washington or in Richmond, but to come up with something that everyone could agree to. Everybody didn't get what they wanted, but everybody agreed to it. And I think it's going to be good, strong evaluation system. The three things that I think that are the biggest differences for you are, the first one is the contract time for probationary teachers. It used to be that it was three years was a probationary contract. Now, it is up to five years. The second big thing is teacher evaluation and the definition, how you can dismiss a teacher. And teacher can be dismissed, this is a continuing contract teacher, for one or more unsatisfactory evaluations. The third, and that is also a very interesting one, is the grievance procedures have been changed dramatically. And so, the degree, you no longer have to, for dismissal of a continuing contract teacher, go through the long involved process that you have been going through. But it's one where you do have to have an objective hearing officer who hears both sides, and then the school board, as always, makes the final decision on dismissal. The second thing that, and you've read and heard a lot about it, is A through F. And this is the governor's idea that you can give letter grades to different schools. And it's, at this point, we don't know, he sent out information about what schools would have As, what would have Bs. However, the legislation reads that the State Board of Education is going to have to make those kinds of decisions as to what the accreditation standards will be and how this all would work out. So, the State Board, and it's a week from Wednesday, is going to have a meeting of their accountability committee. And it's a meeting of the committee of the whole, so it'll be all members, who are going to talk about accreditation standards. So, if you have any ideas of some of the things you'd like to see happen with this, the person to get in touch with is Joan Wadiska. And let her know some of your feelings about how this all should happen. The other one that was very controversial was the OEI, the Opportunity Education Institute. And essentially, this allows the state to take over failing schools. And the designation of what is a failing school is in the legislation, and that is any school that has been denied accreditation. And then, any school that has been warned for three consecutive years may go into the Opportunity Education Institute. However, what happened with this was the governor asked for $600,000 to get this whole operation started. And the General Assembly only gave him $150,000. So, it is still pretty much in limbo. This is not something that is a great concern to Falls Church because you don't have schools in this category. However, and they thought that they were going to have a small net, they was only going to pick up about five schools in Virginia to begin with, which is true, but one of them is in Alexandria. So, we've had a lot of work going on with that. And again, how the State Board of Education is going to define what accreditation is. The fourth thing that I want to talk about was constitutional amendments. And there were constitutional amendments to allow the State Board to authorize charter schools and not allowing local school boards to have that prerogative. That was defeated. And some of the other things that happened with OEI were also defeated. And that was, again, a situation where the House of Delegates obviously is going to vote however the governor wants because it's heavily Republican. The Senate is 2020. So, if you get a tie, then the lieutenant governor makes the decisions. But there were a number of cases where there were moderate Republicans who voted with Democrats for things that would be more helpful to schools. And I'm sorry that Delegate Scott left because he was wonderful and one of the things that was so important to us, which was the cost of competing. And as you know, the governor wanted to eliminate cost of competing completely. Well, they were able to compromise, and so you got back 75% of what the governor was going to take out originally. Now, about the bills on your legislative positions, and I just talked about cost of competing. Some of them, there was no actions. For example, virtual school funding, no action. And then, there were a number of things that were defeated. Of course, opening of school was defeated again. And I don't know if it's, if anything is ever going to come from this except. The State Board of Education is really working hard on this. And the State Board is now going to come up with a definition of what would be an innovative or creative program. And their definition is going to be very different from what they have ordinarily used. So, it seems that if you can make a good case for this being innovative, or even, they're almost pushing to the point where, is this going to be in the best interests of kids, that the State Board is going to be more willing to look at any kinds of things that you come up with, as far as why you would like to start school before Labor Day. As far as ever getting it through the General Assembly, this is my 26th year. Every year, we've tried, and every year, it's been defeated. The flexible state assessment program was defeated. We were very, much more successful with higher education for immigrant students who are not permanent residents. And what happened this year was Delegate Rust, he's a Republican from Vienna, he is the chair of the Higher Education Subcommittee, introduced the legislation to allow students who had been approved for deferred action to have in-state tuition. That was a huge step. It was, it passed the House, or House committees, and then went into appropriations where nobody even took it up, so it died there. But this is more action on this issue than we've ever had before. And especially having Delegate Rust, who is well-respected, and he said that he had changed where he had been all these years on this, and he really felt strongly and looked at it from an economic point of view, more than anything else, saying that these are students who are here, they're in Virginia, they are going to stay in Virginia, it does us no good to keep them from going to college. And putting up the barriers that we have as far as college tuition in Virginia is not a smart thing to do. So, I'm very hopeful that next session, that we'll have even more success. Kinship care was one that you had in your package, and the governor did, the legislation was approved, and the governor did sign it. You had continuing contracts in your package, and that was never an issue this year. The continuing contracts, as far, and that was part of the compromise kinds of things that went on with the teacher evaluation and contract bill. So, it never became an issue, which was a very good thing. And VRS, there was no action on VRS in this year's General Assembly because they had taken the overhaul of it last year, put it all into effect, as you and Lisa especially well know, about all the different things that happened with that. That the last VRS report indicated that things were going much, much better than they had, that, you know, with the new influx of people who were in the program and a number of people who were continuing to work, that, and of course, with the stock market doing better, that it looked better than it had. One of the things that we've talked a lot about is mandates. And come on, please, no more mandates. And you know that Joan Wadiska has been on the Governor's Mandates Commission. Well, this year, we had a bunch of mandates again, those mandates got through, some did and some didn't. Some that did is CPR. And we had a legislator who had parents with a very, very tragic story and felt that their daughter could have been saved if teachers had CPR. General Assembly agreed that that would be the case. So, now, all of your staff members, teachers, support, school bus drivers have got to be CPR certified, and then all students have got to get CPR, it's going to be a graduation requirement, starting in 2016, 2017. My understanding is that this is something that is very often taught in health classes anyway, and so it probably would not be as big a burden as we had originally considered that it would be. On eating disorders, we had, we had legislation that you would have to screen for eating disorders for every student between, in grades five through 12. Fortunately, it, what we ended up with was, you know, this would be an incredible burden on the school division to have to every year. And no one was even able to tell how do, how would you go about actually doing the screening? Would it be some self-test? Would it be watching kids in the cafeteria? I mean, nobody could come up with what it would be. So, now, it is just that you've got to provide information to parents about eating disorders, and putting something on the website would meet this requirement. Again, this year, the homeschool students participating in interscholastic sports was a big issue, and it was, it was defeated. We had a lot of stuff, obviously, about school security. And so, you have school security improvement funds and local security grants, threat assessments teams, which I believe you already have, and yearly school lockdown drills. And I am, I think that you probably are already doing that. So, none of that is going to make a lot of changes for you. And in truancy plans, this was also something that did not look like would affect you much because there would have to be multidisciplinary teams that are looking at truancy plans, and I believe that you're already doing that. So, it was an exciting year. As you know, every year, the state provides less and less funding to school divisions. That does not look well. We've got an election coming up, and so, we'll see what might, what might happen with that. But I don't think that, I think we have to protect what we have. I don't see that there's going to be any big push to provide more funding for public education. And I'd like to thank, I'm sorry Delegate Scott left because, as you know, he is on the House Education Appropriations Committee. And he usually signs the minority report, but he has been there to support public education, public education funding. Senator Sasselaw has been great this year, defending schools and school divisions. He is the Senate Minority Leader and has worked very hard on that. And I'd like to thank Mr. Sharp, who has been the legislative person from the board, who has always been there with the questions, some of the answers, and has always been there as a support to me as I've been doing this. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you so much. I'll start to my left. Any questions? Greg? John? Kieran? Can you make a comment?
Lila, thanks very much for your service this year and for many, many years. Your reputation certainly helps in getting our viewpoint across in Richmond. And I know you work with other localities in our area. When I went to dinner, we had dinner with the Arlington group, including all the legislators from Arlington. And it was just terrific experience. I did want to mention your success that you noted of the, I guess it might be called initially the continuing contract bill, but it, but it did not focus on eliminating the continuing contract, but modifying the terms. And I know you said it was a collaborative effort among the different constituencies. But I recall a phone conversation that we had over, well, it started out with the school board is going to be able to select a single individual who will, who will do this, and it could be a member of the board, who would, who would be the fact-finder instead of a fact-finding panel. Well, as I think our board, our board pointed out, and as we discussed in that conversation, boards really don't want to have a member, a member of their group be a fact-finder. We're really looking for a neutral party and somebody knowledgeable about the procedures that go into the grievance process. And so, I think once it was clarified that that indeed was the case, I think that was a key, a key point in, in the process. And thank you for raising it so early and getting that point clarified. I think that helped, helped get it pushed through. We can talk about the budget questions on another occasion, but I would say there is a push that is being assembled by nonprofit groups in Virginia. I've been attending meetings in Arlington, the leaders of Voices for Virginia's Children, Virginia Nonprofits. Virginia Nonprofits, a group called Ready Nation, which I'd never heard of before, but there's, there are a number of different leaders of nonprofit groups who are planning a forum, at least tentatively set for George Mason University, June 15th, where they will invite statewide candidates, particularly the Governor, you know, those top-of-the-ticket candidates, to come and explain what it is, what priority they will give to children and youth. And they are hoping to have a thousand people there to encourage them to speak about youth, children and youth as the top priority, that should be on the campaign agenda, and urging the candidates to, to pick up that as their top priority. So I'd urge you to look for some more news about that. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Ms. Hye?
I'll add my thanks, Lola. It's always a pleasure. You do a great job for us, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
Okay, thank you very much. And I, and I, it's really easy to represent Falls Church, because you all are so supportive, our legislators are supportive, and you have, as Delegate Scott said, you have a very nice reputation in Richmond, as being a progressive, caring school division and city. That makes a difference, too.
Great, thanks so very much. I also wanted to add to Lola's comments about Kieran Sharp, who has done a fabulous job as our legislative liaison, and I certainly hope he'll continue doing that into the future, because he shows interest and expertise in that area, and has just been a real help to this Board. So, thanks, Kieran. All right, moving right along. Approval and adoption of science textbooks, is that? Ms. High?
Good evening. I'd like to ask Brian Harris to come up. He's our Curriculum Instructional Resource Teacher for our 812 science at the high school, but he spent a lot of times over the last two years working with the committee to select textbooks for the science curriculum at the high school, as well as in eighth grade, which will be moving back to MEH, and I'm going to turn it over to Brian, and thank you for all the hard work that you've done through this process.
Good evening. First, as long as I'm here, let me just personally say thank you guys for all of your hard work with the budget this year. We really, really appreciate it in the schools. But as Lisa said, over the last two years, we've been going through the curriculum review process, and actually, last, the last time I was here was when we were presenting that report, and as part of that, one of the recommendations, and really one of the needs that we found was to get new textbooks for some of our classes that hadn't had new textbooks in about 10 years. And so what you see on the table in front of you is the, the work of the last seven or eight months by a committee of teachers and, and members of the community, and I'd like to recognize those teachers and members for a minute. The teachers that served on the committee were Dr. Peter Mecca, Will Stewart, Martina Goss, and Janet London. Will and Janet are both two of our first-year teachers here in the district and are already contributing significantly. And then from the community, we had Jim Clemec, who is a nanotechnician, works for Miter Corporation, has actually gotten us some spots in their Young Women in Engineering Program each year, that has previously just kind of been reserved for Fairfax, so that's been a great opportunity. He also actually served on the Board that did the curriculum review, and so he was there for that as well. And then also James Allen, who has extensive background in geology, has been a professor of geology, and has done a lot of work with textbook review committees before, and so those two gentlemen have a lot of background in science, know the content, and know what good textbooks should look like, and so they were a huge help in this committee. The books that we chose were chosen for a number of reasons. First and foremost, the content, the content that they have is all aligned with the Virginia Standards of Learning for the biology, the eighth grade, and then actually the environmental science book, which is the green book there. We don't have an SOL for, it's a, a non-SOL course that was developed by one of our teachers, and so that's not aligned with Virginia Standards of Learning, only because there aren't any. We also looked at the reading levels, and the reading levels for each of the textbooks has been chosen because, well, two of them have multiple reading levels that are available, and then they're all well within the reading levels, using the SRIs for the grades that they're intended for. The decision between the two biology textbooks, one of them is actually an honors biology textbook, the black one, and the one with the parrot on the front is our regular biology textbook that we've looked at. And a couple of reasons why we have the two separate ones, one of the things we talked about was potentially having just a single textbook for all levels. The reason that we decided not to do that was because the black textbook, which is the Holt McDougall textbook, has a little bit more content, it goes a little bit more in-depth into some of the areas, and we found that that would be a little more appropriate for the honors level courses. But we wanted to stick also with the Pearson textbook, because it actually has two levels, two reading levels that we can get with that. It has a normal level, if you want to call it that, and then it also has a second level that's more appropriate for, for ELL students and students that have reading problems, that are reading below grade level. And it, it presents the same content, but the language that it uses is different, and it really focuses on the big ideas, the main components that the students need to, need to know, and so it helps that with that understanding. All of the textbooks that we've used have significant online components. They have the entire textbook online available in PDF format. They also have a lot of other resources, both for students and for the teachers, available online. They have online lab, labs for the students to work through, they have practice problems, they have assessments that can be done online that shoot the results back to the teachers immediately. They have, they all have a Spanish version of all of the worksheets available for the students, if that's something that they need. With the eighth grade textbook, which actually is the two on your right, there's one other part of that, and the eighth grade textbook is broken up into modules, so that they don't have a very thick textbook that they have to carry around. It's also a write-in textbook, so that they would get, that each new eighth grade would get their own, or each new eighth grader would get their own textbook that they can write in, make notes in, and then every year, as part of the contract of the company, we'd get a new set of those textbooks. It's the same company, it's the same strand as the seventh graders are now using, and so the seventh graders who use it for the first time actually this year will now be using the same type of system next year as eighth graders with that textbook, and that was another thing that we took into account with this. So they have some experience with that style. And really, that's, that's it, that's what, kind of, those are the big things that we looked at, the content, the reading levels, the accessibility for the students, and then the online aspect of the technological aspect. They're all also, for students who have mobile devices, they can access all of the textbooks on their iPads or any other mobile device that they would want, if they prefer to read things in that fashion as well. So, any questions then?
Let's see if somebody has a question. Do you have a question on this one? Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to give you a chance. I'm starting to hear my left, any questions?
So, thank you for your work. I have a rising eighth grader and seventh grader right behind that, and I'm just very pleased to hear about this PDF action part, that I won't have to hear that I left my book in the locker anymore. Are there additional costs associated with the contract for that? Like, wanna, is it built into the contract, or will, you know, so it's free access to the PDF for all students? That's fabulous.
Yeah, the, for all of them, the, the contract includes the hard, the hardbound version, as well as the electronic version of everything, open access to everything.
Thank you so much for all your hard work on this. This is always an area of particular interest in mine, since I've worked in textbook publishing for many years. Just a couple of questions. Well, comment first, the eighth grade, I'm very pleased that this is, you're coming up with a, a new program for that. I think that that was sorely needed, and I think this is going to be really, you know, embraced by the students, so I'm, I'm very excited about that. A couple of questions about biology, the, the orange book, that would be for the general biology. So are you going to identify, you know, certain students who have different reading levels? I mean, how's that going to be handled in terms of the books that you have on hand?
Yeah, it will, it'll be used, the, the plan or the way we've kind of looked at it, and we've actually been using it kind of as a supplement already, where our biology teacher, when they have students that are struggling with reading and struggling with content, they use it kind of as an in-class resource, and they'll have them read the, the lower-level textbook in class. And that's kind of what we foresee happening as well in the future, and then also, that lower-level edition will be available online, and so our teachers will be able to identify the, the students who are struggling with the reading, and in conjunction with our special ed and, and ELL teachers, and point them in that direction, and give them, and show them where to access the other level of the reading text.
Okay, so we're not buying two sets of books?
No, no, not at all.
The, we have the ability to access that if needed. But that's, that's good, that's a big help. And just to clarify, this is for the general ninth-grade biology classes, the honors and regular biology, and it has nothing to do with IB, there's other?
Right.
That's another program entirely? Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Go ahead, Justin.
In, in terms of what we're currently using, are these, are any of these sort of later iterations from the same publishers, or is this a, how much of a change or evolution is this away from where we are?
Well, it's very significant in a couple of ways. One, we're only really sticking with the same publisher for one, and that's for the, the regular biology textbook. But the reality is that we're so far removed from the edition that we're using now, that it might as well be a totally separate textbook. The, the copyright dates on our current biology textbooks are 2004, our eighth grade is 2003, and for our environmental sciences, 2003 as well. And, and as I'm sure you all know, in science, that's a, that type of gap is enormous. In six months, these may be out of date. But the, the change is pretty drastic, especially I think with the eighth grade. The textbooks that we use now realistically don't get used that much. The language in them is, is difficult for a lot of eighth graders, and it doesn't get used much by the students on a day-to-day basis. With this approach, with the, the ability to write in the textbook, with the ability to take notes, write in the book, and, and actually they have guiding questions and, and areas to kind of focus the students, I think that's, that's a big change, and it's going to make it a lot more interactive. It's going to make it so that the teachers can actually use the textbooks a little bit more actively in class, which doesn't happen right now. And so I think overall, the, the change is, is pretty big. I think that also the, the incorporation of the online aspect, because none of the textbooks we have now have that significant of an online presence or a mobile presence.
And how significant is that? I mean, are we going to be keeping these until 2020? Or, or how do you see the future playing out, and how, how wedded will we be to these textbooks in the future? Or, if you can write in them, what happens, you know, after, after the school year's over? You get new ones?
Well, in terms of being tied to the, the review process, the cycle that we're on now would have us reviewing these textbooks and potentially adopting new science textbooks in five years, five to seven years.
And the state's textbook review is a seven-year process where it aligns with changing the SOLs, and we're working to align our textbook adoption within one year of the state choosing textbooks. Our goal is to choose textbooks for our, for Falls Church as well. So we're trying to align with the state, because we have been a little bit off, so our goal is to align with, with the change of the SOLs, would be the change of the materials.
In terms of writing in them, the, the eighth grade textbooks, the students keep those, and so maybe they use them as reference in the future. Hopefully, they don't recycle them. The other textbooks, they're not intended to be written in, that doesn't necessarily mean students won't. But with, with the online component, with the, the PDFs, another nice thing about those is that there is actually a note-taking function on all of those, and so if they are reading them online, they can very easily pull up a section where they can type in notes, which saves it as a separate file that they can refer back to, they can print out. So that's a, a nice aspect of them as well, that hopefully will reduce the note-taking.
And are those PDFs licensed to the school or to the student? Do they, what happens at the end of the year? Does access to those PDFs go away for the student, or?
The notes that they write, they have access to, they can save those as separate files. The actual, the actual PDFs of the books, those are licensed to the school. Potentially, the students could go back and, and, and reference them after they're out of the class.
So they'll still have access to them after, like, next year?
I believe so, yes.
The way most of the textbook companies work is that they give you an access code, and you have X amount of access codes, if you have 180 that we've purchased, and as long as you don't have 180 accesses at exactly the same time, then you're okay.
Oh, to concurrent?
Right.
Okay. All right.
And they're usually not that eager. All 180 are.
That would be a problem to have, right? Kieran, did you have any questions?
No.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I believe that the Board approved the adoption of the following textbooks.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you-
I apologize.
I, I appreciate your enthusiasm, however, the question, I'm not sure if it's for you or for you or you or all three of you, but I'm, every time we approve textbooks, I wonder where we are in the continuum of not using hard textbooks, but electronic textbooks. Because I'm, I'm, I'm hearing you, Ms. High, say that we're going to try to get on the state's seven-year cycle to replace these textbooks, and I'm thinking to myself, we probably need to replace them in three years, not seven years. There's money, I know, in, involved in that, but I'm just wondering, you know, kind of where we are in terms of that cycle.
And the reason why I said seven years is, we don't want to buy new textbooks, and then they change the SOLs, and then they won't align, because as the SOLs change, the, the book, the, the publishing companies change the SOLs to align. As far as being out of date in three years, that, that might be the case, but, I mean, our teachers work really hard to adjust and, and, you know, make, make changes and use what they can in each, each of the materials.
Yeah, I know, I, I get that. I know our staff does an outstanding job. I'm just kind of wondering, as an education industry, you know, kind of where we are in terms of buying an electronic textbook that we know they're going to update every summer, or every two summers, so we're not buying books and they're getting out of date, we're having this, this is the way the internet world works, right? We're always updating and always improving.
And I, I think I can add to that. One of the things that when Lisa talks about a textbook adoption cycle, it's really just when we're looking at, which we didn't really have before, and she's just put that together for us this year. So we have a five-year cycle that's very tight, so we know when we're studying the content area, and then what year we're adopting, but the reality is on, on, on most of these, we hope the textbook publishers get better at what they're doing, because right now, they, they tend to roll out the online textbook, and they're not, like almost every other software package that we have, we have instant updates all the time. They tend to roll these out online, and they actually hold them for four or five years before they update. They're not, they're not really with the market, I think, in the way that we hope that they will be. I think we're going to see that change. The biggest issue for us, which I think Brian's on the digital learning team, are you part of the digital learning team? You're very digital at the high school, I know that, is making sure that we have access for our students to be able to have a digital device to access the content. And until we resolve that issue for the high school, which they are begging for, I think that we are, we're going to be where we are, and we will be behind. And we want to be more progressive and, and get our kids using more digital content and digital tools.
And with these specific ones, the, the biology and environmental science are, as Dr. Jones said, they're up and they're, they're kind of static for a couple of years. The eighth grade one, they actually did say that they plan to update it yearly. And so while they won't necessarily update the print version, that the online component will be updated to some degree.
Yeah, yeah, great. And once again, I know our staff is doing what they need to do, I'm just always, it's just always a reminder when we have these in front of me to say, hey, how about that electronic textbook thing that's always current, rather than, you know, these heavy things that kids carry around that might be out of date. Mr. Castillo, did you have something?
But, but it does also raise a question, I mean, if, is the, are, are we teaching SOLs, or are we teaching science? And if science is moving ahead of the SOLs, is somebody somewhere thinking about how to keep the SOLs current with what we know?
Joan.
Yeah, Joan, come on, where is she?
Yeah.
Well, and what I will say is that I know that in the, in the high school, we've always stressed that the SOLs really are a minimum standard for us, and that in, in all of the classes, we're really trying and go beyond that and incorporate more current technology and, and ideas than, than what are in the, in the SOLs. Because oftentimes, by the time they're published, they're, they're out of date.
All right. There's nothing else. Mr. Razzus would like to make a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the adoption of the following textbooks: Eighth-Grade Physical Science, Science Fusion, 2013 publisher Holt McDougall; Biology, Biology by Ken Miller and Joseph Levine; 2010 publisher Pearson; Honors Biology, Biology by Stephen Nowicki; 2013 publisher Holt McDougall; Ecology, Biology, Environmental Science, Your World, Your Turn by Jay Witkett; 2011 publisher Pearson.
A second. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any opposed or abstentions? Thank you for your very good work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. High, thank you as well. All right. Next, we have, ooh, a fun thing. Ooh. Presentation of Athletic Boosters gift for the baseball and softball lights. Am I turning that over to you or Mr. Chaney? Mr. Chaney, you're on.
I'll speak to it. I don't think I can make a motion or vote on it, but earlier this evening, I handed a check to Tony, and now it's in Marty's hands, for $247,190, which was the balance of the funding for that project, absent the, or in addition to the $110,000 CIP money. So that covers the bills and gets the negative off your account, because I understand the bill was paid a while ago. I just wanted to note that obviously, this was an innovative project that required a lot of approvals and faith and risk-taking on a number of people's behalfs, including the school board, the city council, city attorney, Danny Schlitt. And I call out a couple of people, in particular, in the letter that I wrote on this. Tom Horn, who really shepherded this through, among other improvements and things going on, getting it all done and done in a, you know, really attractive way. And then Mike Short, who really brought the idea to the boosters to start with, and arranged upfront funding from a variety of sources, so that we were able to, to put the lights in for this season, and, and then be able to fundraise over time consistently with the guidelines. So the check is essentially to say that the lights are there, however, the work is not done. We've raised about $120,000 over $240,000 roughly, based on donations and events and things, and then soon, we'll turn our attention to selling of advertising and other things that will pay off over the next four, probably four or five years. And we'll be working on that on the May 20 meeting. So it's a thank you to the entire community who had faith that this effort could work. And I, I just want to particularly thank the school board for, for having that faith and letting this innovative approach to this happen. So we'd motion, I think, as somebody said, we have to ask them to take a gift?
[laughing]
So that's the active action on the agenda for this evening.
All right. Ms. Highland?
I wanted to make a motion, if that's all right. I move that the school board approve receipt of a gift in the amount of $247,190 on behalf of the George Mason Athletic Boosters to cover the remaining balance of the softball and baseball lights that were recently installed. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Is there any discussion before we take a vote?
Please. As the school board liaison on the Athletic Boosters for the past couple of years, I can attest to the fact that, as Mr. Chaney pointed out, a lot of really hard work has gone into this, and I've been witness to much of it, not all of it, but I've seen, I've heard the, you know, gen, sort of evolution of this plan, and there have been so many people who've been so enthusiastic about this, that it finally has been done is just a really great testament to the hard work that all these folks put into it. And I know there's a lot of really happy families here in Falls Church, so thank you all.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'll just mention what I think is a strong linkage between the fundraising in this instance and our success of our ordinary budget. I think this is an outstanding example of how the school community provides some resources outside the usual tax-raising area of the city, and recognizes that in some ways, the city has some limited capacity to, to do that because of its, just the structure of the community is strongly residential, but, you know, rather slim on, on the business side. And so being able to, to provide this in a way that, that does not impact on the, the, the regular tax-raising mechanism is, is quite a, quite a boost to the success of our, our regular budget. I know when I have campaigned, and I've campaigned a lot, [laughing] I, I get a lot of questions about, oh, well, doesn't the, the city budget greatly favor the schools? And, and, you know, to, to some extent, you know, to the disadvantage of other city services? And typically, my question, answering a question with a question, is, well, have, have you seen our swimming pool? And have you, I used to say, have you seen the lights on our athletic fields? And now I have to say, did you know that the lights on our athletic fields weren't paid for through your taxes? They were paid for through fundraising, separate from that. And so there, there are things that we do to help with the priorities where, where our priorities really ought to be, is on the classroom, and making sure that we, that we keep small classes, that we have high-quality teachers. And, and one of the reasons we can do that is because we do these collateral things that, that help us to, to focus on those priorities. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? We approve the acceptance of that gift and of that phenomenal check, and I just want to say a couple of things about it myself. I, I, it would have been years before we had lights on the field if it weren't for some really clever and dedicated citizens in this community, and I think we want to recognize that. Mr. Chaney is a bit too modest, because he's one of them, and he doesn't take any credit for it. So I'm going to tell him he should take credit for it. I'm going to recognize him along with his, the rest of his merry band who pulled this together. I, I think it's one of the best examples of how small community like ours can work together. You see a need, some people put their hand up and volunteer, and we're off to the races to find a way to solve a problem. And I think it's just a real testament to our community and to the people who live here, not just the school community, but our community at large, that we've, that we've been able to do this. That being said, we have a lot of community work ahead of us. We have a lot more money to raise. I'll tell you that it was a blast at the ball fields last Saturday night, when there was a fundraiser for the lights. I, I, Mike and I went up and enjoyed it. We're baseball parents, so we lived through a lot of baseball season without lights. Dr. Jones was dressed in a jersey and playing softball, as were other folks in the community, as well as some of our softball and baseball players. It was just a great night, a lot of fun, and raised some money, more money than I had imagined it could, but there's a lot left to go. So if you're a member of the community or this board, keep your eyes and ears open for, for ways to continue to fulfill our obligation. And I think that this is hopefully a model for things we can do in the future. I can tell you that as the person who was, was giving the presentations for the budget this year at town hall meetings and other places, it was terrific to be able to point out to people in the community the kind of support we get from folks for the schools, and the level of support. Aside from what we received in this check tonight, you know, in, in this fiscal year, we're expecting $350,000 worth of support from other school affiliated organizations. So it's just, I'm tickled pink. I think it's absolutely awesome, and thanks to everybody who had any little part in this. It's just great. The next thing we're going to do is called MEH Rock, which is interesting. I assume that would be Dr. Jones.
Yes. You know, on our playground at MEH, we do have a large rock. And, you know, when it was put in, it was probably the best thing at that, that date and time. But as we have progressed and equipment is changing, and we're moving eighth grade back to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade building, the staff want to put in new play equipment. It's fairly limited there with space, and they're actually going with more of a physical fitness-type model where you can climb and do things that especially eighth-grade boys, believe it or not, will really enjoy doing. The other thing about the rock is we have found we have quite a few injuries. And so we did reach out, just so that you know, to the city first, thinking that perhaps in one of the city parks, they might actually like it, and we were going to donate it. But they felt that the liability for the rock was too much. So we would like to be able to auction it off. We know somebody will be excited to have it in their backyard in America, and then we'll be able to reinvest that back into more play equipment.
Is this like a pet rock, only bigger?
It's pretty big.
Do you want a motion, Susan?
Yeah.
I'd love to make this motion. But I think I was part of the approval process to start with on the rock, so it's only good that.
There you go.
I move that the Falls Church City Public Schools designate the rock structure at MEH as surplus property and authorize staff to sell it. The auction proceeds be deposited as miscellaneous revenue in the school operating fund.
All right, very good. All right, Mr. Sharp, that's so appropriate. The two of you would make that motion. Is that going to, all in favor, please, in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Okay, we're going to, we're going to auction the rock. School board members, you don't have a better position in that auction than anybody else in town.
Are we going to do it on a per-carat basis?
If I auctioned it at a baseball game, can I keep the proceeds for the light?
There you go. There you go. Always thinking. I love that about you, Mr. Chaney.[1287.54][1287.54][laughing] All right, we're going to have to hire a guard to keep track of that rock till we can auction it off. Okay, next item is the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology update. This is very timely, because I've had a handful of letters from concerned parents about this particular thing. So Dr. Jones, if you would bring us up to date, and then I think you can just roll into the construction update after that, after people have had a chance to ask questions, so.
And we did get our update just literally, I think, a week or so ago, whenever this went on Board Docs, from Fairfax County. And so we do know that it does not start this fall. It would be, it'll be reflected in the FY15 budget, and so it'll be that following year. The way that they are structuring is that it's, we have two options. One option is a flat rate of $345,661 that we would have to pay in one-month sum. Or we can choose to, it's basically like paying in addition on top of the tuition of $1,847. And as we get closer to that next year, the school board will have to make that official decision. Hunter and I both have studied the numbers and, and feel like the $1,847 will be very reasonable for us to move forward and still keep providing this opportunity for our kids. We do feel the lump sum would actually, based on past history, could actually cost us more, even though it's supposed to be a cost savings. Because while we do have three spots every year, we tend to not fill them. Our kids will often choose to stay with us. And so that is just information that will, you'll see reflected in the budget next year. And I do know it's been a community issue, so we wanted to be sure it was on the agenda tonight.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sure we'll have discussion at some point during the next fiscal year. I'm going to go back. All right, construction update?
Okay. I was supposed to roll, sorry. At TJ, if you have not had a chance to drive by, all the brickwork has started, the windows are going in. It just looks fabulous. We're very excited about that. Inside the building, we do have task two work that has started, and all of the ceiling tile in the corridors has been removed because they're starting the sprinkler system. As you can imagine, that's quite extensive work, and they work in the evenings and on Saturdays and Sundays. So we have pretty much 24/7 crew there, a very short window of when there's nobody in the building working. And again, removing the corridor, once they removed all of that, everything was cleaned up. And it's actually, the air quality, I think, is fresher having the ceiling out than it was with the ceiling in, because so much of that was very, very, very old. So other than a little bit of noise, teachers have just realized they have to shut their door, because you can hear the air unit kicking on in the halls. But everything's going great there. We also, on May 29th, will be having a Cherry Street meeting, and that is the first kickoff where we're really talking about the CDC property and forming that ASAC committee and working with the community and the people that work and that live in that neighborhood. So we've sent out information. It went out again today from Mount Daniel. They're making sure their parents that have little ones, as well as we're asking the community members that live around Cherry Street area to help us kind of blast that out to their blogs. We also have a Mount Daniel homeowners meeting tomorrow. Mr. Lawrence and I will be attending. We did meet with one of the members of the homeowners association independently. He met with them, and I met with them as well, had great conversation, and they've invited us to the homeowners so that we could start that early conversation about Mount Daniel. And, and the homeowners just have some questions for us and concerns, and, and that's just allowing us so that we can be prethinking about when we get ready for our facilities discussions, we'll know what their concerns are and what they're excited about and not excited about. And that's it on construction update.
Can I ask one question, just to, because rumors are, since I live in that neighborhood of Cherry Street, and I'm happy to help with that process?
Okay.
Can I just get it on the record that at no time did we think about taking away the tennis courts or Frady Park is a part of this process? And can we put that out there? We are not thinking about affecting the tennis courts or the park?
Absolutely. And that night, I'll make sure that we have a big old slide that addresses both of those. And that's a question that I think I'm getting the most often as well.
Thank you. Well, now I can say that it's officially adverted, that there's no surreptitious plans to affect either of those. Thank you.
No conspiracy.
No.
Never thought of, never discussed, never brought up, never considered.
I wouldn't touch that.
Yep.
No.
All right. Very good. Are there any other questions or observations about that particular topic? Very excited. I want to thank city council for continuing to financially support this initiative on our part. I think this is going to make a world of difference for our youngest kids, and will be something that will be a, a real source of pride for the city and a model for other school divisions when we're done with it. So it's just great. All right. And PPEA approval?
What I'm requesting tonight is officially for us to continue our work with pest construction, with Arcadis, and also with SHW, who's part of that PPEA, to work on the design work for Cherry Street, because our goal is, on July 1, when officially our funding comes in, we really want to be able to hit the ground running. And then when they vacate Cherry Street, we want to be, you know, breaking ground quickly. Right now, if they vacated in December, we're looking at, which would be December next year, 13, we're looking at a 12-month cycle, so it would be a mid-year move-in, unless, of course, we can get a more aggressive schedule, which we always push for. But that will, this will give me the approval to work, to work with them and continue, to start to work on Cherry Street officially.
All right. Thanks very much. Are there questions about this? Anyone? All right, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board approve the superintendent to move forward on the existing PPEA with pest construction, Arcadis Construction Management for the Cherry Street project.
All right. Thanks very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, very good. Superintendent Jones, go get them. The final, I am in the business portion of the agenda tonight, is the monthly budget status report. Dr. Jones, will you be giving us that in Hunter Kimball's absence, or?
I can't, did you, do you have it there, Marty?
Do you have it there? Okay.
Oh, I've got it on Board Docs. I'll do it. That's fine. Yeah. I, I didn't know if you were prepared, so. And looking at, [laughing] in looking at the projected spending during the remainder of the fiscal year, that would be $9,743,780. The projected year-end net financial activity would be $388,681. And looking at the food service fund, the projected spending during the remainder of the fiscal year will be $212,484. Projected year-end net financial activity, $1,345. And again, that's reflective of many of the changes we've seen in food service this year, but we are in the right direction and trending in the right direction. Community services fund, projected spending during the remainder of the fiscal year, $673,446. Our projected year-end net financial activity is $123,324.
And are any of these projected year-end balances materially different from what we've been expecting?
You know, no. The food service one, I think, is probably a little bit different than what it has been maybe last year slightly, but we were expecting that.
Right, because we had our mid-year.
Right.
Good. All right, any questions? Anybody? Okay. Very good. Moving right along to Dr. Jones' superintendent's report, please.
First of all, it seems like eons ago since we actually had the budget approved, but it really hasn't been that long. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank a couple of people. To Susan, as our chair, spent tremendous hours, and thank you for your leadership. It was so greatly appreciated and, and appreciated your and Charlotte's meetings with us to help guide us and make sure that we were on target. Also, Hunter's not here, but I just want to say thank you to Mr. Also, Hunter's not here, but I just want to say thank you to Mr. Kimball. This was, I think, especially one of the most, I think it took a lot of effort as far as time, and I don't think he really took a weekend off for about two months. And so just so appreciative, I'm not sure people always realize the work that goes on behind the scenes. Also Lisa with her curriculum, all, and she's really feeling it now in a celebratory way with all of the hiring and the positions, because it takes a tremendous amount of work there. Marty, of course, is my right hand, so thank you, Marty, for keeping us on track and when we're in lots of meetings, that's part of it. Also with John Barrett, I think that he really did something for us this year that we have not seen in the budget before. And, you know, and again, I think the community for asking questions, because what, that really helped us be able to help communicate to the community what our needs were, to city council what our needs were, and even our staff. Our staff said for the first time they really understood our own budget, which was great. And that, part of that, I think, the strength was the way that John was able to put graphics together that were very simplistic, and you didn't need to read a PDF, you really could just see it in a picture. So just brilliant work on his behalf. Also, I want to say thank you to Mary Beth Conley, who was very active, not only with the business community, at the chamber, explaining, you know, what, what our budget request was. Also, towards those last few weeks, really working with the community and parent community to make sure that they understood what their requests were and funneling questions back to us so that we could get accurate and factual information. The principals, of course, you know, it took a very long time for them to put together mandated critical important items. And when you're talking about over $3 million to prioritize, literally item by item by item, just brilliant work this year, bringing us what they needed from their buildings. And lastly, on the budget, I do want to say thank you, there are several members of the city council that I, I don't know if the school board realized how much they reached out to us to understand our budget. And I was so grateful for that, because I, when I go to all of their meetings, it wasn't where we were sitting in the audience and somebody was speculating about our budget. They had already asked us, and Hunter and I were able to run numbers and explain, whether we agreed or disagreed, you know, with, with what we were giving them, we were able to give them factual data. So I thank city council members for working so hard to really understand the budget process. And then quickly, a couple of disfun stuff, academics. Christina Holman is a Gates Millennium Scholar, you may have seen that, so we're celebrating that, that's very exciting. We have our summer governor's school appointments, and Maeve is actually one of those, and she probably, I bet she has her calculus test tomorrow. AP test, yeah. My son's in that test, too, that's why I know that. We also are celebrating yesterday, the Newsweek rankings that came out, and we were very excited about that formation, because we were so disappointed with the US News and still cannot quite figure out. I've, I've been emailing their statistician back and forth. When you look at our numbers, we should be on there. What they've communicated is it has to do with our free and reduce, but we didn't, the data they use is two years old, we don't even, we didn't even have enough students for the small end. So we're not really sure what they did to the formula this year. But we know we have a great high school, so we're, we're just, we'll put ourselves on that list. We also, if you didn't get a chance to see Hamlet, what wonderful actors we have at the high school, just absolutely fantastic. Teacher appreciation week is this week, so if you get a chance to reach out and say thank you to a teacher, please do. Screen free week was a huge hit for elementary last week, and in this day and age, that's not an easy thing to do, to go screen free. I'm not sure that, I should have participated, but I just couldn't. With athletics, spring sports is winding down, and we're looking forward to district regionals and hopefully some state, and I'll be traveling down for those. Also getting ready for SOL testing. One of the things I'd point out about SOL testing, and we'll be sharing more data with the school board as we go into, you know, the summer and the fall, is we're really looking at our transient population, which has been very interesting this year. We have, as we were looking at those numbers today, we've had 8% of just new students coming in, which is, that's a lot for us in a small school division, and we only have about 6% that are actually moving out. But that means that we have between 8 and 10% of our kids that are sitting for SOLs we may have had for a month, two months, three months. So it's been a little bit different trend, and we're going back and trying to really study that, that that's going to be an interesting testing cycle this year, with a new reading test as well. We're also looking forward to a couple of big dates, the gala on May 17th, we hope that you have that on your calendar. If you didn't buy a ticket, they sold out really fast, but.
There's a waiting list.
There is, still.
Yes.
She got 50 more, and I think they went really fast again. We're also looking at the community visioning, which is a huge opportunity to involve people from all across the community, and we're really trying to put out a lot of invitations, people that don't have children, people that do have children, have pre-K, not in the schools yet, because we really want a representative group of the community. And we're going to host it at the gym, if we can get that many people, we want as many as we can. So very excited about that on June 29th. We also have, on May 16th, the, the Board of Education is hosting a president's listening tour, and so that's that kettle run, and I will be in attendance, I know Mr. Sharp, I believe, will as well. And that's really to have a voice for us to the Board of Education. Last but not least, I just do want to add, I am still co-chair of the virtual task force of Virginia with the SBA. And one thing that, is they were talking about the legislation tonight, we've been very excited about the work we did over this past year, because what we saw in the General Assembly this year was that they really are moving and supporting local control, which really does affect our hybrid learning and what we want to do, and not pushing us to go with a large-scale provider that would kind of take over if you want to have virtual programs. And so we're working closely with the Department of Education and those agencies across the state. The other thing with it, with General Assembly going into next year, is I will be representing the Region Four superintendents on VHSL. So I'm sure with the homeschool issue, between, I think Tom is back on that committee as well, we'll definitely be in the know next year and be engaged at the General Assembly level. That's all for me.
Wow, that's a lot.
I know.
It's a busy time of year, for sure. All right, board comments. Can I start with Mr. Lawrence?
Well, since it's late, I'll just be quick. Mostly on the budget, I just want to thank, you know, the members, especially the city council, who voted to fully fund us. I know it wasn't an easy vote, and it was a big ask, and thank you, you did the right thing, and I think Dr. Jones will use that money very, very wisely. And other than that, I want to thank Dr. Jones and Hunter and God knows everybody else for giving us more iterations of different possibilities of the budget with zero turnaround time, nights, weekends, early mornings. You know, like I said, I've been here since September, and it just couldn't have been a more supportive, stressful process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
I did supply a memo on federal legislation for your review. I'll just indicate there are generally NSBA advocacy positions that I think, if I read them correctly and read my colleagues' sentiments correctly, I think they're generally in line with where we're wanting to go. And if you, if you have some comments, please get back to me, but I want to sort of on a, unless I hear otherwise basis, I would like to be able to respond to some of these calls for action. If I feel that there's possible controversy, I certainly will, will get in touch with you. But as I did with the, there was a vote yesterday on internet sales tax, and Senator Warner was already on board, he was a cosponsor, Senator Kane did vote for the, for the, I'm sure it was my note to Senator Kane.
I'm sure.
Pushed him over, over the edge. But anyway, I, I think we probably have consensus on that. But if, in any case where you see that we, we may not, welcome your, your comments and any comments you have on that memo. I did attend the chamber dinner, which was really an outstanding event, and Tom Clinton, who's been an advisory board member for us, and of course, our treasurer, was honored at the, at the dinner as a pillar of the community. He's certainly, along with Hunter, an example of, of a lifer here who's gone through our, our school system and then trained and came back and is serving our city very, very well. Jim Scott was also honored with a special recognition by the chamber. I mentioned earlier tonight that there is a Virginia Children and Youth Initiative and their forum, and we had Lila here, and that group has been meeting periodically. They're meeting again tomorrow evening, planning this event for June the 15th, and then they want to do later events if the, June the 15th event is successful. So again, if you have feedback on whether we should participate in such a thing or not, that would be helpful. I have been trying to, just as a, as a technical thing, help them connect with leadership at the VSB and other people that they, that they just want to reach out to, inform them of what their, what their plans are. It's relatively neutral initiative in the sense that if they're not trying to formulate specific positions on things. They really want to have that develop much later. Right now, they're just interested in, in urging candidates to put children and youth as a top priority, and that's, that's about it. Tony mentioned the Board of Ed Forum, I look forward to working with her on getting some comments together to provide for the, for that meeting, which is going to be in Milksville. And there was a regional VSB in Stafford that I attended, and most of that conversation, their, their presentation that evening was on dual enrollment, that sharing of educational programming between high schools and community colleges. And they also noted that there were a number of presenters who went from schools in our area to the national conference in San Diego this past April 14 and 15. And those presentations are online, and so I'll try to get you links to those. I think some of them were very, very interesting for us. On Saturday, this past Derby Day, I was fortunate to be able to attend a Derby Day celebration at John Faust's home. John is a supervisor for the Drainsville District, which is one that adjoins us to the north and adjoins the property where we have the, the high school and middle school. And while we didn't get a chance to get into any, any detail, I think it was, it was a good time to celebrate together and, and to show that we're, we're in a position to cooperate on a friendly basis. Let's see, one more CBC candidate training is beginning this Thursday evening at the, I believe it's at the Legion Hall. And I want to thank Sally Eckfeld, former chair of the, the school board, who continues to, to lead that group and is very, I think, very responsive to the conditions that we have in the city, wanting to see a, a nonpartisan election in both, both the city council and the school board. And since we're switching to a November election, I think that's an important point of emphasis for our, for our community. I want to thank Sally specifically for, for leading that effort. That's it for today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Castillo, Thomas, Castillo.
That's a tough act to follow, so I'll, I'll keep it brief, and I would just thank everybody for making my first budget session memorable, but also relatively pleasant. I, I commended everybody on the city council for, for their work, but I find you all an excellent group to work with, and I hope we all stay together and do it again next year. And with that, I'll, I'll keep moving it on down the line.
Get the band back together and take on Rose. Mr. Cheney?
Request, at some point in a work session, I'd like the opportunity to take a few minutes to talk about communications during the budget, and just pass on some comments that I received about our communications, both pro and con. But I, it's late tonight, so I won't do it, but I'd like the chance to just kind of do a little debrief on those and talk about it so that's on the table for next year.
Sorry, could I just interrupt it, because that, I remember something I forgot, and that is, should we do a kind of lessons learned sort of retrospective on this exercise? Have we ever?
That's actually was on my list.
Okay, never mind.
Tonight to talk, to talk about, so yes, the answer's yes. Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, I also would like to thank everyone within our staff, but also the five council members who voted in favor of supporting our budget, and I'd urge the two that didn't to continue to engage us, and, and they're just as important to us as the other five. And I know that they support our schools, just didn't support our budget, especially when I single out Vice Mayor Snyder for his leadership. It was a difficult budget cycle, and at least to me, my idea, you know, my perspective was that Dave really led in building a consensus within the council, and I appreciate that a great deal. Just a couple of quick things, Parks and Rec, we've started this summer schedule at the farmer's market, I promised I would remind folks of that. We also have the Memorial Day Parade on the horizon, so everybody be looking forward to that. I don't know if we're gonna, I guess we're maybe not going to drag the bell again and ride in a truck or something. Also want to thank Bronwyn Rankin for being willing to serve on the Special Education Committee. She is a, has a fantastic resume for it, and we really look forward to her joining the committee. And this is one thing, it's going to cost us a minute for me to explain this, but it's going to save us a bunch of minutes going forward. So in my continuing geekitude towards Robert's Rules of Order, I have discovered that you can actually ask for unanimous consent to approve minutes. So in the future, if you would like as the chair, you can actually ask, is there unanimous consent to approve the minutes for this meeting? If there are no objections, order them in the same way we do other things. More importantly, I learned that we can update any problems with those minutes over a limitless amount of time. So like if John were to find a misplaced comma, three months from now, we could come back and update it under the same unanimous consent scheme. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I feel so much smarter now.
Tomorrow night, George Mason PTSA meeting, their monthly meeting is going to be a Meet the Entrepreneurs Night. There's a junior at George Mason named Mohammed Mukadi, and his brother is a graduate of George Mason, Abdul Mukadi. They designed and applied for a provisional patent on a new product called the OYO mug. And they will be there to tell their story, and they're going to bring product samples for everyone to see. So that meeting is tomorrow night at the library at George Mason at 7:30. Next week, Thursday and Friday, is the Junior Varsity Show at George Mason. I mean, not junior varsity, junior.
The JV show.
Yeah, it's a, it's a junior.
Variety.
Variety, thank you. But it's presented by the junior class, and that's always a lot of fun. So that'll be the Thursday and Friday before prom, which is that Saturday. So a lot of big events at George Mason, and parents of seniors, don't forget to encourage your children or to do the registration for your children for All Night Grad Night. There's an online registration form that you can get to via the website, the George Mason website.
All right. Thanks very much. I'm not sure if I'm going to say anything original, but I would echo my colleagues in thanking the community for the support they provided during the budget process. PTA members, the parents, staff, my colleagues, and certainly want to point out the cooperation and information exchange with city council and the support of city council for the schools. Since I've joined this school board, was elected to this school board, we have always asked for what we thought we needed for the schools. We did that again this year, and it was a big ask, and I appreciate that members of city council were able to hunker down with us and understand our reasoning and, and approve that, that budget, and I look forward to working with them in the future. As long as we're talking about the budget, I want to encourage my colleagues to put on their thinking caps, not just about communications, as Mr. Cheney brought up, but any aspect of our budget process. With a light toward having a discussion here soon about what was great, what maybe wasn't so great, what we can improve on. Every year, we kind of tweak and change a few things, but we'd like it to be as effective as possible for us, for staff and the time and effort they put in, which is phenomenal, and for the community to be able to understand and learn what we're talking about. So I'm going to ask Tony to make sure she schedules that work session here. And if you have ideas you want to send over, go ahead and send them over. And if you have ideas you want to send over, go ahead and send them over, or otherwise you can bring them to that work session that we're going to have real soon on that topic. I'm hopeful we can have that work session this summer instead of having another thing in the summer about the surplus, which was eight of our summer last summer. I'm also going to ask Dr. Jones, if she would please put together a schedule for this board that will run through the end of August. It's just a few more months, it'll take us to the summer in terms of meetings and also work sessions. Now that we're through with the budget, we'll get back to our second Tuesday normal schedule. And then we identified tonight three or four work session topics, and if you have others, you know, get them to her. I want us to be able to take a look out. In summers, we've done different things in different years. Some summers, we've met our usual schedule, some summers, we've taken August off, we've done different things. If you have ideas about that, let Dr. Jones know, and we'll have a discussion soon about that calendar and the summer schedule for the School Board. And then the last thing I want to do is for the community, I want to let you know that there is an election coming up in November, and School Board seats are available. We have five, four, four-year terms, and one two-year term that will need to be filled in the November election. I would encourage people who are committed and dedicated to the Schools in Falls Church to consider running. I know my colleagues and I would be happy to hear from anybody who might be considering it to share with them what it's like to be on the School Board in terms of learning and time commitment and all that kind of thing. But the schools in our city are excellent, largely due to our staff, but also due to this board and the people who are engaged and committed and agree to serve on it. So I'd encourage you to think about it. And I'm telling you this now because you would need to make your decision and submit signatures to secure a spot on the ballot by June 11. This is a little bit different for our city, because it will seem early to people since the elections aren't until November. So if you're smart and want to have fun and hang out with the cool kids, think about joining for, running for the School Board. And I think that that's it for my comments tonight. The next thing we have is approval of minutes, and Mr. Rasmussen, feel like explain the way this magic might work to make this more streamlined. Maybe we can use it.
Sure. All you have to do, as the chair, you can ask unanimous consent that the minutes be approved, and if there's no objection, order them.
Ah, okay. Yes, please.
I want to revise and extend your remarks for just a minute.
Okay.
I know you were very complimentary of David Chavern and his role in helping to, I think, galvanize the community behind our budget. I think it was an extraordinary piece of work that he put in, showing the history of the community's support and the ongoing reason why we're such an outstanding school system. And I'll just mention that I was fortunate to hear some of this extraordinary character at the Regional VSA. Barbara Coyle, who's the executive director there, was on her own doing kind of a survey of what the School Boards were asking for in terms of a transfer of money from the general government to the schools. And she was seeing a 2% increase, 3% for. And she ran down a long, long list and then came to Falls Church, and it said, it said 14%. And she called Joan, Joan Vedisca. She said, Joan, is this a typo? And Joan said, no, it's not a typo. But it was so, so out of the ordinary, that that was Barbara's reaction. And I just want to say thank you to all that helped us. And whether it was a 10% figure that, you know, people were willing to stand up and support, or the 14%, it was still extraordinary, extraordinary level of support by our community. And we should be very thankful for it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Now, I am going to see if there's unanimous consent to approve the minutes. Is that the right term? To approve the minutes as one, rather than going through all four of them. Yes? Yes, yes, yes. All right, done, right? All right, very good. Is there, if there's no other business, we'll adjourn for the evening, anything else? All right, thanks very much, colleagues. Thank you very much.